A minute, a moment. And this is John Lewis. Or not.
Thank you.
Or not.
We're going to do a tag team here. Lee is just setting us up here for the intro to the meeting. Thank you, Commission President Rocky Smith and Mayor and the rest of the Commissioners for having us again. This is our third work session on this topic. First of all, I'd like to introduce a few of the consultants that we have in the room tonight. Clark Worth is closest to me here. He's with Barney, he's the Worth in Barney Worth. And he's also Libby's, Libby Barge's boss. So you may remember Libby. She couldn't make it tonight. And Clark was willing to step in. We have John Horvick from DHM Research. He's going to be presenting the public survey information that we've been collecting. And very interesting topic there. And then you'll remember John Gilarducci with the FCS Group. He's doing most of the financial work on this. So I know there's Water Rate Advisory Group members. Dan is one. We have Rose Holden is another. And I think that's it, although there's been other people in the audience that have been involved, but they're not actually on the Water Rate Advisory Group. So again, this is our third work session, informative presentation. We hope you can take it all in. We've got about 56 slides to get through. And I understand we have an hour to do so. So we're going to move through those quickly. Very interesting results. We want more good work by the water rate advisory work group. Again, feeling like it'd be nice to have a little more time with that group, but we're moving through this. So we're going to do an introduction. John's going to run through the water rate scenarios, some of which you've seen, some of which you haven't seen. I just wanted to remind those on the Water Rate Advisory Group. There was a debt scenario that we talked about. We're going to show you that tonight. And Mayor Neely asked for a couple 20-year scenarios, and we're going to show you those as well. So, but some of the very interesting stuff is going to be the public information. I really, we got a peek preview of that last week, and it's very good information. Like it or not, we're going to give you a couple of recommendations, and we hope you will take heart in those and think about those. Really, we want to get down to some discussion and direction. But like I said, we've got 56 slides to get through, so we're going to do it quickly. Timeline, quite a bit's happened since January 2012. We've done, we've done the water rate master plan, or we did the water master plan, did the water rate study following that. We've done some public outreach, and so we're going to share that tonight. We continue to meet with the Water Rate Advisory Group for, I think we ended up with three meetings there. And if that makes sense, we're willing to have more. We've definitely been out and about with the communities to try to give them this message as well. So, and again, this is our third work session. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John, and he's going to move through this.
Thank you, John. Well, we have developed four different options for you to consider in looking at a charter, a potential charter amendment. And I guess really only three of them would require action. The first one is no amendment. If there were no action or no amendment made, the rollback would take place in October of 2014. That would result in, by our estimate, about a 27% loss of revenue to the water service. It would also continue the requirement that you pass a public vote in order to issue debt of any kind, not just general obligation bonds, but also revenue bonds. The result of a 27% loss of revenue, and I won't belabor this particular scenario, we'll focus on the other three. But just, just to remind you, after a rollback of that severity, the water service would be unable to meet even operating costs and would be able to do no capital at all under that scenario. So the other three that we'll focus on, what we're calling Scenario Two, would be an amendment that would stop the rate rollback, so there would be no rollback. And then it would fix a ceiling, as the ceiling is currently at 3% per year without a public vote. Scenarios three and four, which received some support, you'll see from the polling and from the Water Rate Advisory Group. One would also avoid the rollback and set a ceiling at 5% per year without a public vote. And then the fourth one, an 8% cap without a public vote. So Scenario Two, and again, this would avoid the rollback and limit rates, rate increases to 3% per year. Over five years, the monthly bill would go up by an average of a little over a dollar, assuming 3% per year was enacted every year during the period. You've seen the 10-year forecast before, or you've seen numbers very close to this. We've refined our projections. One of the things we learned, we knew, but we learned again, that when you forecast over a 20-year period, which I'll show you in a minute, things like inflation factors and small percentages here and there have huge impacts when you forecast them over a longer period like that. So we made sure that our inflation factors are appropriate for capital and operations. Over the 10-year period, what you're seeing here is that red line is the revenue line, assuming 3% increases per year. And you can see revenues fall well short of needed master plan, capital, and pipe replacement. That's in the dark blue section of the stacked bar. And also the Public Works Center, which is the light blue at the top of the stacked bar, which would be funded by 2021 if there were no revenue constraints. So that area above the red line is capital that the city is unable to fund at 3% per Looking out, and I'm, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about the 20-year forecast. It's, and I mentioned the swings related to inflation, other factors. But one of the things that's difficult and should be kept in mind about a 20-year forecast is we're holding things constant, like inflation, growth, and assuming that they continue at a very even pattern for 20 years. And we know that's not the case. But for a snapshot of what, you know, of what the next 20 years could look like, I think it was very useful for us because it revealed some things that we hadn't thought about in just looking at the 10-year window. So again, when you look at the 3% scenario, what you see are ongoing deficiencies on the capital side, and they result in a cumulative deficiency, capital deficiency. By 2033, that's the 20 years out, we're at $53 million of unfunded capital. And that, that is the very much needed pipe replacement program. You have an older system, and the estimates in the master plan are you need to be replacing pipes to the tune of $2.3 million a year in current dollars, plus specific projects that are in the master plan. So anyway, those would be accumulating, that deficiency would be accumulating. And you would, you would not have a good way to, to stop that from happening without a public vote. So you, just to, just to give you an idea of what average monthly bills would look like over the period under the 3% scenario. Scenario Two, they go up about $10 in 10 years, assuming 3% increases are adopted every year.
This is just water, right?
Just water.
Okay.
Yes. Scenario Three, again, would avoid the rollback through an amendment and then set the ceiling at 5% per year instead of the current 3% per year. For an average household, in five years, the monthly bill would go up less than $2 a month, about $1.79. Still, you can see revenues unable to meet capital needs in the 10-year period, getting closer by 2023. And then when you look at the 20-year period, in, you know, as you get out to 2027, that's when you finally begin to make up any of the capital deficiency that has accumulated. And that accumulated capital, this is a little bit, this doesn't look like a lot of money, but it, but the, that's because the Y-axis goes up to $120 million. I kind of regret that. But you're at about $13 million of accumulated deficiency in 2033, under the 5% per year scenario, Scenario Three. Monthly bills go up about $20 for the, in 10 years, assuming 5% per year. And we had some comparative information that showed that even after 10 years of 5% increases, the city would still not be at the top of a current rate comparison. You have neighboring communities that, whose rates are at this level right now.
We have some that are lower, too.
Yes. Yes, there are a number that are lower. Excuse me.
And most of them are in trouble.
So one of the things that you asked us at, at a previous meeting was, okay, what, what does work if 5% doesn't work? And 8% works. Under an 8% ceiling, and this again would not require 8% every year, this is just the cap. The, for an average household, if 8% were adopted for the next five years, that's about a $3 per month increase on the average bill. You'll see in the 10-year forecast, capital needs, there are substantial capital needs unmet early in the 10-year period, but by 2023, you're starting to dig into the cumulative deficiency. That's the orange part of, of this graph. And over 20 years, you're actually, and I should say, in the 10-year forecast here, you'll notice in 2020, the rate increases go from 8% to 3% because you've essentially climbed the hill. And, and after that, you can go at 3% per year and still make progress on the cumulative deficiency. And that shows up better in the 20-year forecast. This is one of the things that we've been able to refine as a result of taking this out 20 years. 8% per year to 2020, then 3% per year actually erases the cumulative deficiency at the end of the 20-year period. So you'll notice in 2033, you're right at revenues equalling total expenditures. So it's likely that you wouldn't be able to continue 0% increases. But I wanted to give you that, that whole picture because it shows how you can accomplish everything, again, as we projected it, and it's in the, the adopted master plan. Here's what the cumulative deficiency looks like. It goes up to around $10 million, and it's essentially zero at the end of the 20 years. Monthly rates over the next 10-year period, again, assuming 3% beginning in 2021, go from the current average bill, 3241, to about $60 per month in 2023. So one thing, one final point. I looked back at the CPI in the Portland area, and that's the blue line. This is historical now from 1991. And ENR is the index that we use for capital cost inflation or capital cost escalation. Because I knew, you know, as I was forecasting over 20 years, I kept thinking, boy, this is hard to do because we know inflation rates are so volatile. So I just wanted to reinforce again that when we forecast out that far, it's very difficult to do it with any certainty because you see fluctuations like this in our escalation rates. But again, take in with that grain of salt, hopefully find that information useful.
Clark Worth and John Horvick are going to take over, and thank you for that, John.
We thought you'd ask John Gilarducci harder questions here. Save them for us.
Or save it.
Well, to do the introductions, I'm Clark Worth with Barney Worth. And on my left here is John Horvick with DHM Research. DHM Research, which did most of the work that you're going to see here tonight, is Oregon's leading public opinion research firm. They're the people you see on TV on election night. You know, it's a nonpartisan, independent firm. So they've been around a long while, even if John hasn't been around a long while. The firm's been around a long while. We've worked with them, our firm has worked with them for more than 30 years. So, and John's going to do most of the talking tonight about the work that they did. We're going to share with you the results of a telephone poll of 200 Oregon City voters, and also an online survey of about 150 people who volunteered to take the survey online. We're also going to talk about the results of many conversations had in meetings with the Water Rate Advisory Work Group. And the acronym for that is, looks a little strange, it's something like Wet Rag. But these are nine community leaders broadly representative of the, of the community. And again, I think some of them are here tonight. You know their names. From those different audiences, you know, if we start with the advisory group, those are highly interested people in the community, you know, who are committed, involved, knowledgeable. But we also tested other levels in the community with the online survey, interested people who were interested enough that they would volunteer to go on a website and take a survey. And then also people in a category we would call not yet interested. You know, people maybe haven't heard much about this issue, but are really important because, folks, those are people who go vote on Election Day. So very important to us. And interestingly with this, and this is John Lewis mentioned, these are really interesting results. These are interesting results because we got a lot of convergence from all three of these sources of information. So it's almost the same answer from each of those sources that we got. And we'll talk about it briefly. The telephone poll summary, the, the purpose of a telephone poll is to really, so that you don't have to guess about where people are coming from. You know, we're really able to find out. And again, back to election night, you look to a lot of those polls, polls are really, you know, these days are very accurate, and you can get a good idea where people are coming from. What we found is that Oregon City is starting from a good place. People have good feelings about the water service in the city. You get pretty high marks and, and good feelings about water quality. However, there's a very low level, a very, very low level of understanding about the water system and about the city charter amendment. The provider, many of the people we talked to didn't know who the water, their water provider was. A lot of them thought it was Clackamas River Water, which is not such a good thing right now. The source, 50% identified themselves as not knowing what the source of their drinking water was. And, and this is really unusual to have the number being that high. However, in many communities, we find out, they say they know, but they don't. In Oregon City, the most honest people that I've ever seen in the poll saying they don't know. 50% of them, they don't have any idea where the water comes from. And they especially don't know anything about South Fork Water Board. Many people thought South Fork Water Board was in the wastewater businesses, in the water business. Really not a clue, most people, about South Fork. Problems with the system, same thing. Not much awareness of problems of the system currently. And virtually nobody's aware of the 1996 charter amendment. You know, the people, if the people weren't involved in developing that in 1996, they probably don't, don't remember it. We also found, and this is where convergence is important, we found that by providing some information, that the no amendment option is unacceptable to two-thirds of the respondents. So that, that's a big number. You know, we have, folks, we have to do something. When they learn about it loud, the message loud and clear from voters, community leaders, other people who are interested, do nothing isn't an option. We also learned that both the 5% and the 8% cap options, which John Gilarducci previewed with you, have some support. You know, both of them in the community have some support from, from the public. With that, I'm going to turn it over to John Horvick.
Well, thank you very much, Clark. Great summary. And thank you all for allowing DHM Research to participate in this project and be helpful. I am going to walk you through the survey. Clark did a really good job of, of putting it in context. I want to, before we begin going through the results, I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with the methodology that we used. So the telephone survey was a 200-sample survey of registered voters in the city of like us, or the city of Oregon City. Not like us, but.
Careful, yeah.
Oregon City voters, okay? It's real important. Registered, we use the registered voter list. I got, question I get asked a lot is how you deal with cell phones. And this list of voters that we called did include cellphone numbers. So about 15% of the sample comes from cellphone numbers. Real important. It's more expensive to make sure we contact those, but because of how people are communicating, it's very, very important that they're included in the sample. I want to let you know that that was the case. The survey was conducted real recently. It was done on the 18th and 19th of October, so these numbers are very fresh. Took about 10 minutes to go through the questions with folks. Also real important, in any survey that's random, right? We, we call people at random who are registered voters in the city. You can by random chance be off in one demographic or another. But we know that there's some real important demographics that shape people's public opinions on issues like this, including age, gender, and a political affiliation. So we set quotas on that. We make sure that the sample of folks that we talked to matches those, that demographic, those demographic profiles of voters in like, in waters on my mind, in Oregon City. And so I want to assure you that that was done as well. We do callbacks, make sure that we just don't go through real quickly through the numbers. And if people don't answer the phone, just move out to the next person. For, for data quality purposes, we make sure we try to reach, reach all folks in the community that they have an equal chance of participating. Margin of error for a sample size of 200 is 6.9%. Okay? All right, let me run you through the numbers here. We began the survey by asking folks, open-ended. So this is, before they're introduced to the topic, we get on the phone, we say hello, we go through the survey. The first question, what's the most important issue for your local elected officials to address? And this is what they told us. Jobs and unemployment and education are the two issues that rise to the top. This is what we see across the state, across the country right now. Jobs and education are the issues on people's minds. Notice down the list.
Wow.
Lower, lower their water bill and water rates, just 2% of voters in this community mention that unprompted. So not a top, water's not a top of mind issue for, for folks here. Next, we tried to focus then on the specific issues in the community and to triangulate a little bit, because we want to ask about issues in some different ways. We ask open-ended first, what's the top of mind issue for you in the community? Does water come up? We wanted to know that. And then we asked again directly. But here's a list of services we asked, that they're being provided for by the city or by their local school district, and how satisfied they are with them. And you'll see you're doing very, very, very well. Okay? Public safety, 95% of Oregon City voters say that they're satisfied or very satisfied. Parks and Rec, 90%. Water, 86%. These are really terrific numbers. We do this work across the state, across Pacific Northwest. These are exceptional numbers. You should be really happy with them. Schools fall down a bit, in part because more people don't know. Schools are more contested public service than, than other issues, and there's more sort of concern about that than some of the others. But in terms of what the city's providing, excellent marks. We asked a follow-up question, again, open-ended, about the most important issues that voters here would like their officials to address. And here, in their own words, here are some of the things that they told us. Well, I would have to say more businesses, to say more business in order to boost our To make the downtown area more vibrant and remodeling it to better attract tourists. Education, are worried about class sizes and schools closing. The schools' budgets are being cut, class time is being cut, school supplies are being cut, and teachers are being cut. The schools are suffering. The roads are too busy. They need to figure out a way to make them work so people can drive on them. And one comment, get rid of the added tax on my water bill. Words of your own residence. This is what they say that they want addressed.
Added tax on my water bill? Anything other than the statement that was made?
Not, not for this particular intervention, that was the entire comment.
I think, I think when people, when you say water bill, people mean utility bill.
Right.
And, you know, the distinction is not made, and a lot of people saw the increase to the pavement maintenance fee.
Right. And that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, so I think most people think, will call the utility bill a water bill.
Oh, sure. That's very common.
It's probably got some wastewater.
I'm sure it does.
In there with the regular water bill.
We asked voters, just tell us about the quality of your water. 35% told us it was excellent, 40% said it was good. So 75% saying excellent or good. Again, very, very strong numbers. And Oregon, water quality, folks are very satisfied with their water quality. Just for a little context, we recently did a survey statewide. 87% told us that their water quality was excellent or good. So Oregon City is right in line with what Oregonians across the state are saying. All right, here gets to some of the knowledge issues that Clark alluded to earlier. We wanted to get a little bit of information about how much people know. So we asked, open-ended, we did not give people categories to choose from. These are what they, they came up with on their own, just where's the source of your drinking water? 37% were able to mention the Clackamas River. 50% volunteered, as Clark said, that they don't know. And then there's a mix of some other ones. Now, we've gone, we've asked this question across the state and in the metro region. I was actually quite surprised the bull run isn't higher here because of the, sort of the Portland mystique about bull run and how that story's been spread across the state and the region. And we see lots of communities confused, but people weren't offering that as a reason. But, but there's not a lot of knowledge about something as basic as where their water comes from. We also asked, what services does the South Fork Water Board provide? Again, this is open-ended. These are the things that people told us on their own. 71% offered, I don't know. Here are some of the comments. We had a follow-up. In your own words, what does it do?
I don't think we have to rub it in.
I don't have the slightest idea. I've never heard of them, so I don't know. I'm assuming it's something to do with cleaning the water, assuming they do water and sewer. This is an important one in a way. There's a bunch of disagreements, right? There is confusion in the community about who's providing what service. And it's, it's important to recognize that, that things that are happening elsewhere, if there's not good communication about what you're doing, people may make some wrong assumptions. And that affects how they think about the issues that they put in front of them and about. And then one comment, the officiate over the operation of the purification of water and distribution to Oregon City and Westland. Again, another knowledge and awareness question. We gave people some information about the charter and asked them, were they aware of it? 85% told us that they were not aware. Oh, excuse me, I'm jumping ahead a little bit. We asked if they were aware of any problems related to their water service. 85% told us that they're not aware of any problems. Okay? So different ways to take that. And one is that there are some issues, right, that they have to be addressed, that not aware of them. On the other hand, so the positive way to look at this is, water's something people are having to worry about right now. All right? They're satisfied with their service, they feel like they're getting good service. They're satisfied with their service, they feel like they're getting good service, they're satisfied with the quality of their water. They can worry about other things, at least their talent is that they can worry about other things, okay? But most folks don't know of any issues that are happening. A small number, 29 people out of the 200, that told us that they're aware of some problem. Here's, these are the types of things that they told us. That there's clean and pure water issues, that something about quality, their water quality. Again, administrative and water board issues, right? Now, there's only eight people out of our sample, so 29% of our 29, that's about eight people. But again, that's coming up, it is an issue for some, some confusion there. A need to maintain the water system and pipes, 21%, which is six people out of our 200. Water pressure, and then some other comments that didn't fit into a category easily. And then here, and just again, in their own words, here are some of the things that they said that they were aware of. The infrastructure of the pipes needs to be replaced and updated. The issue would be the lead in the drinking water. The fluoride and chlorine that is in the water, there's way too much. There were comments here, both, by the way, that there was too much fluoride in the water, and that water should be fluoridated. So, there's some confusion about what's happening in the community, at least for some. Having problems with the water board, again. While the Willamette River is gross, I wouldn't even take my kids there. And one comment, I put it in here, the system has to be updated, and it's going to be a rollback. We had one comment about that. Okay, next, we gave people a list of common issues, common water issues that communities face, and we asked them, how much of a worry are they for them personally? And the greatest sense of worry was the cost of their drinking water. But I actually want to go back, can I go back? Notice that cost did not come up unprompted, okay? But one prompted, when they get a chance to think about it. You know, cost, they tell us is their biggest issue, 54%.
No, just to make sure, no, we're talking about here, now you're asking specific questions.
These are specific questions.
The others were responses to people.
Open-ended, that's right. Thanks for the clarification there. That's right, yeah. So, once prompted, people told us that the cost, 54% told us that worried them a fair amount or a great deal. Next was issues with contamination at the source, 51% told us that worried them a fair amount or a great deal. And the age and condition of their water pipes. Other issues were safety of the water system, and emergency, and availability of enough water to meet the future community's needs. Next, we gave them a very brief description of the water pipes in the city, and the city's master's plan to replace them. And asked them, is it an urgent, high, medium, or low priority to address this? 10% said urgent, 39% said high. So, 49% told us it was an urgent or high priority. I'm going to come back, remember that number, because I'm going to come back to this issue later in the presentation. But 49% told us it was an urgent or high priority to address them. All right? After going through that, we gave them, next, some information about the charter. All right, so this is some background information, telling them about, in a paragraph, the issue of the charter, and what's going to happen going forward. And asked them if they were just aware of it, just aware, not whether they thought it was feelings about it. 83% told us that they were not at all aware. This is the first time they're hearing about it. Another 7% said they're not too aware. Again, this is an issue, like Clark was saying, I'm a little surprised by the honesty, because often when we ask questions about this in surveys, people want to say, oh, yeah, I've heard about that before, I know about it. And then, we do work in qualitative settings, in focus group settings, you realize they don't actually know that much about it. But here, people were willing to tell us, yeah, I don't know, not aware. All right, we tested, we presented information about the four options that John talked about earlier, the no amendment option, the 3% option, 5% and 8% option. Okay? And we asked them whether or not they would support or oppose those options. I want to show you the results to that.
Clark, before you went to, at this point, they've gotten some backgrounds as to what some problems are?
They got some background, what the problems are, I'm not exactly sure. They got background about the state of the current water pipes. They got background about the issue of the amendment, and what would happen when, going forward, if the amendment, if the charter amendment isn't dealt with. And then, they were described what would happen with each of these options, both in terms of their costs to their monthly bill, and what it would pay for. And the cost was given both as a percent and as a dollar figure.
I think, I want to be clear, there's no scare tactics there or anything. It was pretty much just information, here's the charter amendment that's coming in, you know, 2014, 15. And, you know, nothing was, it was pretty straight up in terms of the question or the information.
It was in neutral language, it wasn't presented as a positive or negative. This is just the facts, ma'am, type of question. Often, you'll hear surveys where they test messaging, will they give you positives and negatives about certain things? That wasn't the point, it was just the facts, ma'am, types of descriptions, and asked them to respond. So, a majority said that they would support the 8% cap option and the 5% cap option. Importantly, only 33% said that they would support the no amendment option, do nothing. And a minority also said that they would support, at 44%, the 3% cap option. So, here we see a large portion of your residents saying, we need to do something, and leaning towards the 8% and the 5%. Now, when we ask questions in this way, where we say support or oppose, and you see the bar graphs like this, you get a sense of the intensity. But we ask a follow-up question, again, to give you a better sense. So, we asked, after presenting all these options and asking if they support or opposed each one, we asked, oh, I'm skipping ahead here, but we, let me actually skip ahead one more. We asked, what is their most preferred option? If you had to choose one of these, what is your most preferred? In a plurality, 33% told us it was the 8% option. Next was the no amendment option. So, there's a constituency out there that would strongly prefer, given the choice not to do anything, but that's the minority. And asked to choose which one is their most preferred, a plurality told us is the 8%. Who are those folks that prefer the 8%? Here's where our rollback. We didn't see a lot of demographic differences in this study. That is, looking at the different demographic subgroups, men versus women, long-term residents versus new residents, Democrats versus Republicans. But here's one where we did. The greatest support for the 8% cap option, 78% of new residents told us that they supported that. 65% of 18- to 34-year-olds supported that, versus the total of all residents, 56%.
Now, for the, for those groups, then you've got really, your sample size is going down.
Sample size is small, but these differences are statistically significant. The differences are large enough to show that they're statistically significant. But you're right, Mayor, certainly those are small sample sizes.
When you look at the ones at the 20% no amendment, did you do demographics on them?
You know, it's a pretty small group, so it's hard to make, there were no statistically significant differences between that group and other groups. All right, so, but here is one difference. Remember when I showed you earlier the chart about whether replacing the pipes was an urgent or high priority? Here is, we do see a big difference between people's preferences. Voters who are aware of an issue, think it's important, want it dealt with, strongly lean towards the 8% cap option. So, let me take a moment to make sure I ground everybody on this chart. We wanted to isolate those individuals who told us it was an urgent or high priority to address pipe replacement, and see among that population what their preferred option was. Just to get a little information about perceptions of problems and what they go for. And here, that group, 47% supported the 8% cap option, versus just 17 for the 5, 11 for the 3, and 12 for the no amendment option. There weren't very many statistically different demographic differences, for example, age or gender or political party. But people's perceptions of the problem strongly affected their beliefs about what should be done. We also asked people to choose their least preferred option. And here, there's a split. 42% told us that their least preferred option is the no amendment option. That's the one that they would least like to see happen. At the other end of the spectrum, we had 40% who told us that their least preferred is the 8%.
This is, yeah. What does that mean? I mean, just a few slides ago, it was the other way. So, I mean, I'm having an issue with, we're a town of over 30,000 people that live here, and we sampled only 309 people, including phone and online survey, and nine people on the advisory committee. I just don't know that that's a broad enough, a good enough sample.
Well, I'll tell you, it is one tool that you have in community engagement.
Right, right.
So, it is representative of a survey of what could be accomplished in a community this size.
Right.
And it's an honest attempt to make sure that all opinions are heard. But it is just, the online survey and the telephone survey are just tools that you have, and should be looked at in the broader context. And this is what, this is what folks are telling us.
You gave a 6.7 or whatever percent error rate. That was for the 200 sample.
Correct, the 6.9 margin of errors for the 200 telephone survey.
And, but are these, are these here aggregated among the different groups?
Yes, this is the total population here, the total 200.
Okay, this, but it does not include the online surveys?
No, I'm going to show you a couple of the online results here. It's really important to separate the two, because the online is self-selected, people have a variety of interests participating. With the telephone survey, people were randomly selected throughout the community, and everybody had.
I would just say, oftentimes, when you're talking about a city, cities surveys and so forth, they want a 5% error rate, they're going for a sample size of 400. It becomes, the bigger your sample size, the less you're getting in terms of the error reduction.
The larger your sample, the smaller your margin of error.
Yeah. Well, I was going to say, but doubling your sample size does not double the.
Yes, that's a very good observation, Mayor. Your margin of error, if you can imagine a curve, it decreases sharply at first, and then it evens out as your sample size gets bigger and bigger. And it's also important to note, the margin of error is not, the relative size of your population has a very, very, very small effect on your margin of error. So, whether we're a community of 30,000, or 300,000, or 30 million, your margin of error would be the same for a sample size of 200.
Almost.
It seems counterintuitive, but some of these national surveys you see published, you know, again, we've got a country with hundreds of millions of people, the sample size might be 700 nationally. And as you've seen, these surveys get closer and closer and closer to the actual results of elections. So, it's, you know, it seems strange, only 200 people, but for a city the size of Oregon City, that's enough to get a good idea where voters are coming from.
The last question on the survey asked, do you have any suggestions? Give me some information, you've thought about this, you've given us your advice, any other suggestions you have for the city? And two-thirds of us says, no, I don't have much more to offer. Not surprising, this number, considering that they started off pretty uninformed, that they're not able to form opinions on the fly. But there was some of the other comments, more focus on funding, maintain lower rates. Those are a few of the comments we had. But most folks said, I gosh, I just don't, I just don't know enough to really.
Getting towards the end of their 10 minutes, too.
Yeah, of course, yeah. I want to show just a couple of slides about the online survey. We did create the same survey on an online platform, to allow all community residents the opportunity to participate. It was emailed through, an invitation was emailed through the city's email lists, through the social media. D H M also works with Metro through the Opt-In Panel, if you're familiar with that. We sent out an invitation to all Oregon City residents and opted in, invited them to participate. And we had 159 people complete the survey that way.
So, could they go in and take the survey several times, or once you took it, you were done?
Technically, they can. We do lots of things on the backend to make sure that we remove any duplicates. So, we look at IP addresses, we look at people to take the survey really quickly. We look for people who write in the same open-ended comments. And if there's anything that we flag as someone who looks like they've taken the survey twice, they have the same IP address, they answered all the questions the same way, they have the same open-ended comments, then we delete one, we delete the extras. It's technically possible for people to do that. We find though, missionary, that it's really rare that people actually do it. But it's something we're aware of when we do quality control on the backend.
Okay, great, thanks.
So, just to give you a sense, people who take online surveys, who are self-selected, tend to be more aware, more engaged of the issues, and we certainly see that here. And the question of how aware, were they aware of the charter amendment on the telephone survey, 83% told us that they were not at all aware. On the online survey, just 43% told us that they were not at all aware. Okay? So, a more informed group, at least they tell us that they are. But when it comes to their opinions about what to do, very, very similar. Okay? The online is in the green there, the phone is in the blue. Both groups, their most preferred option was the 8% cap. 33% for the phone, 35% for the online. So, the results were consistent. They were consistent between the telephone, between the online, between the work that Clark did with opinion leaders, with Citizens Group. We saw lots of consistency in people's responses in terms of what they're looking for for the city to do.
I'd want to mention just briefly the work with the advisory group. We were here earlier with the advisory group, talking about the direction that they were heading in, but wanted to share a few of the things. At the very start of that process, or early in that process, we worked with the advisory group to develop objectives, you know, what is it we're trying to accomplish if we have a new city charter amendment? What would it look like? What would we want to accomplish with it? The three things listed here are the values or objectives that they put at the top of the list. Replace the outdated provisions of the 1996 charter amendment. Maintain uninterrupted service to Oregon City's customers. And retain a measure of city accountability to voters and water customers over future water rate increases, because they thought that was kind of at the heart of what voters were trying to accomplish in 1996. And kind of thrashing around, if you will, to find something that gave them some sense of accountability. In terms of ranking of the options, there's a next slide there. The two options that came out at the top of the ranking for the advisory group, the one at the top is the 8% cap option, as outlined earlier by John Geller Ducci, and a second option, which was the 5% cap option. Another option that the advisory group thought was worthy of consideration as well is repealing the amendment, the 1996 amendment, and then requiring a vote to debt finance capital improvement projects. But they had to rank that, I mean, they came up, developed that idea. There wasn't any financial analysis we had at the time to show what the result of that was, and that, in fact, turned out to be the most costly option. And I think if they would have known that, that probably would have changed that interest, you know, the strong interest in that, looking into that option as well. Recap and conclusions. To start with, it will take community education for an informed decision on this. We talked about sort of the low level of understanding of the basics of water here, the system, the condition of the system. And we're talking about decisions here that it really involve tens of millions of dollars, and the future of your water system being at stake. So, this is very important to have community education. Again, we know that people are interested, if we raise the topic with them, and again, you've got the most honest citizens that we've surveyed. So, clearly, they want to know. There's a clear mandate to fix the problem. John mentioned numbers, it's like 80/20. You know, once people are aware of the problem, something ought to be done to fix it. And repeal the 1996 charter amendment, which, again, was 15% of people, you know, voters know, can remember what that was about, or say they can remember what it was about. The 8% cap option has support, replaces the outdated city charter, and I think very important, fixes the problem. If we looked at the erosion of some people between 8% and 5% cap, those people are people who felt if it didn't fix the problem, they weren't going to support it. You know, that's the group that supported 8%. On the other hand, then, the higher you go, interest. On the other hand, then, the higher you go, interest, in the interest points, the more, the percentage points, the more people, some people drop off, you know. For every percent raised, there's some drop-off as well from people who are, want to save, save money. The eight percent, as proposed here, retains some measure of the accountability for voters and customers, would maintain uninterrupted service, again, remember that objective that the advisory group had. But it was clear also that the five percent option also has support, you know. And again, on all of these things, the interesting thing, whether we're talking about telephone poll, we're talking about online survey, two hundred people surveyed telephone, a hundred fifty-nine volunteered to take the online survey, and then the nine advisory group members. Looking at all of those sources, there's an amazing amount of convergence in the feedback that we got in that cross-section of the community that we looked at. So, I've been, unusual amount of convergence here in that kind of feedback. So, with that, I think we'll. Back to John.
Thank you.
I just wanted to show you, we did run the, the debt idea that the, the water rate advisory work group proposed, and I'll just show you a couple of slides here real briefly. What we did is, we, their, their concept was to take the ten years of projects, which included specific projects in the master plan, and also some pipe replacement the first ten years, bundle it into a general obligation bond issue, and it wouldn't have to, you know, be one, it could be a couple of them, but I wanted to give you the, the concept anyway. That purple, the purple portion of the stack bar there is the debt service that would, that would replace the cash capital expenditures, which you saw, the two blue portions of the stack bar previously. You'll notice, and this assumes eight percent rate increases beginning in twenty fourteen, unable to, to make the initial debt service payments if the issue was structured like this one in twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen. That would require an initial increase more like this, that's about a thirty-five percent increase from twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen, but then very flat after that, as you would expect, because you're paying level debt service. The one, and we, we talked about this quite a bit, my, my caution about including replacement projects in a, in a debt issue, really, something like pipe replacement should be a, a programmatic annual expenditure that you address without debt financing. Debt financing works much better when you have specific projects, identifiable projects, and the benefit of those projects is going to be spread over a long period of time. It doesn't really fit for replacement. So, conceptually, this might be better applied to just a couple of specific projects, instead of taking the whole thing and bundling it into a, a debt issue. But we wanted to show you the scenario, because it came up with the work group.
John, we didn't ask you, but can you speak to the fairness issue at all with regard to general obligation bonds versus a water rate user? I guess what I'm trying to get to is, the users of the system.
A general obligation bond, as you know, requires a public vote regardless of any charter amendments. You get really good terms on those, but the ultimate security is tax revenue, the full faith and credit of the city. You can choose to pay those with water rates, which is what we've assumed here. We've assumed that even though they would be backed by the taxing power of the city, you would raise rates to make those payments instead of taxes. So, I think the fairness issue would be handled like that, if that's, was that what you were looking for? Okay.
So, I will, we, we wanted to provide you some recommendations, and we've talked about responsible solutions a lot in our work group. I think, you know, to be honest with the water rate advisory group, there was a fair amount of turmoil and turbulence in terms, in terms of getting to an answer, and it wasn't as kind of, it wasn't as clear as maybe that slide was, talked about the two amendment options. But in reality, we did land on those options. It was just, like staff has had, it was kind of a tough decision to kind of come to, or a tough point to get to, and, and we still feel that way. But we, we also feel like we need to provide you with some responsible recommendations. We think these are. The first one talks about just elimination of the chapter, or section fifty-eight of the charter. Putting back that responsibility for rates back in your hands as, as a commission to adjust as needed. And we think that's pretty consistent with most, with what most agencies have. We recognize that's a political battle, but it, we still think that's, for the water utility, that's the most responsible recommendation we could make. So, we're making that as our preferred recommendation. An alternate recommendation is to look at, again, amending the charter so that the rollback doesn't happen and allows for a, a rate increase that meets the short and long-term needs, maybe the short-term needs we catch up over time with, but eight percent, we feel, is something that has, provides good solutions. Maybe not as quickly as, as our, some of our master planning has shown, but it provides us a, a good option. And it looks like, based on that long-term scenario, that we wouldn't necessarily, that would be a, that would be a cap, and based on, you know, the numbers that we looked at, it looked like over several years, that, that eight percent would probably, could be reduced. And, you know, we're hopeful of that. So, those are the two recommendations that we wanted to bring to you. We think they do our responsible solutions for your water system as we, as we go forward.
Can you ask a question?
So, let's see. So, we're back to the, I got one more here, and then, and then, I knew, well, the plan was to go through this one, this one slide, and then give Bill an opportunity to talk a little bit about the charter. Does that, does that work for you?
Yeah, I have my list.
So, let's see, we're going to continue our public outreach. At one point, well, when we started this, we were planning to, we've always been planning to hit the May election, and that's still our plan. Our schedule was set up more on a March election, and so we've kind of pushed that out to give us some opportunity to, to do some of that education that we're seeing is definitely needed. So, instead of, and ask, instead of December, asking the, the city commission to adopt a resolution that was ballot measure, we're going to ask you to do that in February, February sixth, I think is the meeting date. And tonight, we're hoping for some, some direction from the city commission to kind of help us formulate that, that education process and put together a resolution and ballot measure and title that works. Bill, do you want to go to, you want to talk about sample ballot titles?
Sure. I've been working with John and lead on a, a couple sample ones. I don't know if we have them final yet, but it is, essentially, it's a relatively straightforward process. We've got section fifty-eight in the charter, and it would be a matter of, you know, having language that implements whatever recommendation you, you guys, the, the commission were to make, as far as whether it's a straight repeal of, of the measure, cap it at eight percent, five percent, three percent, or if you come up with some other alternative. And it, you know, once we have some idea of what, where the, some sense of the direction the commission is interested in, we can pull, pull something together pretty quickly and get it back to you for, for you to look at. As John said, if you're shooting for the May election, there's a fair amount of time. So, you know, we could pull something together and have it for you, and maybe you learn something along the way and you want to change it. We have, we have time to do that as well. But it's, it's, the, the hard part is not the drafting ballot title and getting the language. Hard part is the education and getting the community behind whatever, whatever recommendation you want to make to the, to your citizens.
Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, just a question.
My question is, when the telephone polls were given, were amounts discussed, like, we saw the figures here, if it goes up so much per year, your bill will be this in twenty, twenty-three, whatever.
Right.
Was there ever a discussion of, if we do the rollback, your bill will be two dollars and nine cents, or whatever?
In the amount of time we had, we tried to give as much information as we could. But yes, to answer your question, they were told the percent that typical household would see their, their bill go up per month, and that would that translate into a dollar figure, including for the no amendment option, which shared with them how much their bill would go down.
Okay, and was that both in percentage and dollar amounts?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe, can you read one of those for him, John?
Sure.
For the no amendment option, I'll read you the language. Do not amend the city charter and allow rates to return to the nineteen ninety-four levels. Monthly water bills will reduce by about seven dollars for the average household, and the city's annual revenue would decline by one point four million dollars. With the loss of revenue, the city would not have funds to replace aging water pipes or other aging water system facilities. Operational and maintenance activities would reduce from the current levels. That's an example of the no amendment. For the eight percent cap option, just to give you a sense of what it's like on the other side. Amend the city charter to maintain the current water rates and establish a new eight percent cap rate on increases unless approved by voters. Monthly water bills would increase by about three dollars per month for the average household. There would be enough revenue to maintain current operational maintenance activities. In ten years, there'd be enough revenue to replace the city's aging water pipes and water facilities to meet future needs. And there's similar language for the other two. The language was developed with staff and with the F C S consultants.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other?
I'm on the, I'm on the green thing, if you go on.
There nearly.
Yeah.
I'll make an assumption that people that support the eight percent would support the five percent, but people who supported the five percent would not necessarily support the eight percent. We're still, we're still in, in a recession. I think this has a great impact on how people view rates. And I guess I, I guess I probably react two ways. One is to say, I could easily support the five percent alternative. If we went for the eight percent alternative, and you're saying, what, in twenty, twenty twenty-three, we should have.
Twenty twenty. I think twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty?
It would go back to three percent.
Well, no, 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 what I'm saying is that, okay, that it could flatten out. I think if we were going to go to the, to the eight percent, then I, I would like to see a requirement that the rates can be visited by the voters every ten years. It, it puts kind of the onus on city services to actually meet what we think we can meet, and, and try to make it more efficient, and then we perhaps could take to the voters a lower rate at that particular time, but if, if, I don't, and actually, you're going to write the amendment so that, up through twenty twenty, where it's eight percent, it drops to three percent, was that the intention?
Actually, the intention was to have a, the eight percent be a maximum.
Yes.
So, you know, that could change, right?
I understand that, but then.
There's no, there's no obligation to the city to bring it back to three.
That's right, that's right. And that's, so what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, the, the way, and I might be able to support an eight percent, is as you go back to the voters, would they rate every ten years or something like that?
Mary, you might be able to even say eight percent would be the cap for the next, is it five years that you need it?
I think it was more like eight.
Okay.
Remember the, twenty twenty.
And thereafter, the cap would be five percent. And you could do that in one initiative, one initiative, and then you wouldn't have to keep coming back every ten years and legislating.
Actually, I thought, I think you saw it go to eight, down to three, on the graph.
Well, in twenty twenty, if you do eight percent.
Yeah.
Because I wrote down twenty twenty, and go down to three percent.
So, so you're really talking about going down to five.
Well, the reason I said five is because I don't think for, three percent is, is basically inflation.
I know.
So, if you ever have any capital, if you don't have that two percent at five, then you don't have any room to wiggle.
No, I understand that. But what I'm saying is that the arguments could be put at the time, and I'm making it a ten, seven, eight, but, or seven or whatever it might be, I'm making it a ten, but it really puts the onus on the city to defend its water rates.
Now, one, one thing that Bill has been looking at for us was, and this might align a little bit with, with what you were talking about earlier in the meeting, Kathy, which was the idea of a, of a water rate advisory committee that had more kind of review authority, and, you know, it would be, it would be a body separate from this, this decision-making body that would either make recommendations to this body, or have the authority to adjust those rates. Somebody that we would be checking in, you know, pretty routinely. That's, that's some, you know, I mean, I remember the street utility fee, that was all, you know, the, the requirement of an annual report was initially in my mind, oh my gosh, it's another report we have to do. But to be honest with you, it's helped tell our story, which we're not always very good at. So, by, by completing that annual report, we look back at what we accomplished the year before, and we, you know, so this, I guess what I'm getting at is that kind of a checking in has some real benefits to the department that sometimes go and realize when you're just thinking about yet another committee that you have to answer to or, or work with, you know, I mean, it's, committees take time to staff and, and deal with, but in this case, it might make a lot of sense.
Commissioner Polly.
Yes, my question was on slide six, kind of going way back in the first presentation, kind of explaining the need when questions are asked. So, have revenues been falling short up until this point? And is the pipeline, the need for that, for the replacement of the pipeline, is that the cause of the shortage at the three percent, if that was kept? And then how long does the pipeline replacement go? Is it ongoing, is it going to be a, you know, continuing?
The pipeline replacement, at least as, as defined in the master plan, is, is seventy-five years. You have a little over a hundred and fifty miles of pipe, and it's two miles a year. So, that's, and I'm, I'm sure, I think it's safe to say it's ongoing, because probably at the end of seventy-five years, you need to start again.
Right. Okay, so, the, but the pipeline, the replacement, that is the cause of the shortage at three percent for the most part? It's just the age of our pipes?
For the most part, that's, that's, that's true. I mean, we don't have a lot of other facility needs that have been listed in this master plan. So, the biggest.
But there's no contingency at that, or there's no.
Right, there's no contingency for those other needs, other than what we have in our operations fund. So, one of the things that was at, well, what if we have a major pi, a major pump station, you know, fail and it needs, or, you know, I think, there's always those kind of things. And I think what we're thinking about is, well, in those situations, you know, we, we may have to take it to the, to the people if we've come into, especially, I mean, natural disaster, for instance, something like that, that would really do a lot of damage, well, you know, that's, I think, that's not what we're trying to share here. We're, we're trying to share kind of what we can do to predict. And to be honest with you, master planning in water systems is usually a five to ten-year process, and we're trying to stretch that into a twenty-year scenario. And it gets a little, gets a little soft out there, but, you know, I mean, assuming we continue, and, and then we're, we're hopeful that these numbers represent kind of what, what we think we're going to need, based on what we can predict today.
Well, thanks. I just wanted to clarify that, because I know that I'm, we're going to get questions, so that's good, you know.
The, the twenty thirteen bar up there kind of tells the, the current story, which is, rates are pretty much exactly meeting operations, and there's just no room for capital of any kind.
Yeah.
So, and I guess the one thing that I'd, I'd add to what John said is, in addition to the pipe replacement program, there were a couple of specific projects in the master plan. One of them was the Mountain View Reservoir, which is in the twenty-year period. What we, one thing that we're doing in order to, to try to do this as efficiently as possible is, we're not funding, we're not adding the funding for pipe replacement and the reservoir, for example, together in one year. We're saying, you're going to fund the greater of those two needs in any one year, because the pipeline, the replacement funding is intended to be used for all kinds of replacement projects, not just the pipeline project. So, that's an example of a non-pipeline project that's. So that's an example of a non-pipeline project that's, that's in the capital.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Ma.
Thank you. Very good information tonight. Thank you all for doing this. Interested in the Mount View spot? You said it may need to be replaced, is that what you were saying?
There's a reservoir improvement project scheduled several years, it's, it's 10 years out. And I'm not sure specifically what.
Because we just built that one.
That's got more, that is more of a, kind of a facility upgrade project. So there was a master plan that was done five years ago or so that talked about better utilization of that yard for, yeah, for, for water needs.
Yeah, so it's not just the reservoir issue.
No, no. In fact, yeah, that reservoir is not going to be replaced.
Thank you.
That's not the indication, no. We need that, the pump station, everything around.
Deal with that again.
No, we're not going to go there.
All right, that's great, I love it. I'm with the mayor. This is hard times. I don't know that I could support an 8%. And I do feel like the water rate and the operations are being rolled into one issue, and I do feel like they're kind of separate, although you can't do one without the other. I understand that, but I need to have a clear message to give to people because I still hear issues about the pavement maintenance fee from my neighbors. And they don't understand, and they're senior citizens and, you know, so we do have to be very sensitive to that. That is true. I'm glad you pushed it out to the May 21st. I appreciate that. So I think that was it. And community education, that was very, very good. Good point to bring up. Obviously, jobs and our school systems, we both should be working together a little bit more, I guess, on getting jobs here and getting our school system doing better as much as we can. So, those are mine.
I have some of the same comments. I agree with the concern about capping at 8% and then trying to bring it back down or, or assuring the voters that that's the cap and we won't really actually use 8% when we get to the, I mean, that's, that's kind of ridiculous. But, so I guess my question would be, which was the concern, I think the mayor brought up the last time we had this meeting, is, you know, do we do that? Or is there, you know, do we do 6% all the way through or 7% all the way through so it doesn't change all of a sudden? Or is it better to do 8% and then bring it back? I don't know. The other question I would have for staff is, do we have a feeling of what other things might be on the ballot in May? And if not, we need to? Just as a night, you know, just to know what's coming in the future. I don't know if the school district's doing anything in May. So it's, it's another thing that will affect what we're doing as a city and we should be checking into. Okay, any other commission comments before we go to?
I did have one other comment. On the recommendations that you put up on the last screen, and I don't know if you get to that, it wasn't in my pocket. But there was two recommendations, I think. One was to take the amendment away completely.
Right.
And just give it up to the commission to deal with as they wished. And I'm not sure that I could support that just because of how this commission may be responsible and watching the money, but in 20 years, I don't know what commission's going to be here, and I don't know how responsible they'll be. So I'd like to kind of tie something to that.
Okay. Any other commission comments before we go to citizen comments? There's a couple that are, or at least one person signed up. No?
Thank you.
Thank you. Frank O'Donnell. Dan Holliday.
You're not on the list. You're not on the list.
I know, we believe in that.
Doesn't he have a say?
Oh, my gosh.
We have our system, Dan, we have our system.
Yeah, we have a system, Dan. Fill out the form.
Frank.
My interest here, I've been watching this from home, and I've seen this enthusiasm by specific staff members like Levy for this 8%. And I've listened to everything that was said tonight. I know Mayor Neely's life is statistics, and he knows him inside out, and he knows the value of the survey. And when you look at that survey, you can interpret it any way you want. I mean, the 40% that say, I want 8%, say, I don't want anything. And 85% of the people don't know what's going on.
Right.
And then you question yourself whether, you question whether, did you call up a 23-year-old in their first apartment who thinks his water is for free?
Well, if we all go to the tap and turn it on, we all think it's free.
No, no, no. The 18-year-old apartment renter thinks that it comes free with his apartment, believe me.
Yeah, yeah. I know what you're saying.
So my question, what concerns me is the impact of compounding on these different rates over the years. And when you first say it's $3 the first year, that's fine. But folks, the difference between, in nine years, 3% rates only go at 13% compounded, but at 8%, they double. They double.
Right.
And you're gonna, you're going to be very unpopular.
Right.
So I don't think, when people start putting in terms of what their wages have increased, it's not going to coincide. I don't think the average worker even gets a 3% raise today. I mean, wages might even be in decline.
That's very true. Your problem, right.
So I think what I'm trying to tell you is, you're going to have to look in your hearts and say, what works for the city and what I can do, what can I do and what do I know? And I'm not going to pick on the survey anymore. I realize it was 2/3 of 1% of the total population. And I know it's said to be statistically valid, but I want to give you some words that I think hopefully will help. I really hate it every time I hear that the 96 measure was outdated because it's not. The same, the electorate today is still seeking control of what happens in their lives. And that's been evidenced by the light rail boats. I mean, the people that did those bonds, they're not in office anymore, you know? And this, and you just saw the result of the urban renewal vote, and there's an urge to control. But by the same token, we want to have confidence in our public officials, we want to give them a range within which to work. So be aware of the political climate within which you operate. I think John Gallaudet, she made some good statements, and the question is, who pays? And the answer is, who benefits and when? So as to how you fund these things, whether they be a raise in rates, or whether they be revenue bonds or general obligation bonds, I think that discussion needs to come on, go further. The goal always was, and will always continue to be, accountability. And in that goal, I would recommend earmarked funds because funds that disappear into the general account are beyond control. And I think do yourself the favor of maybe constructing a compound statement, not a 8% or nothing. Maybe link it to something that if this account grows to this rate, this is an automatic reduction. I mean, you're creative people, you can do this. Be aware of everything, but don't, don't try for 8%. I, I'll take you all to dinner if that passes.
No, you won't do that.
You won't do that.
We won't accept that.
It won't pass, is what I'm telling you. I'm not worried about mine.
Okay, thank you.
Dan Holliday.
Okay, so, you know, I've been part of this water rate advisory group and, and have some association with the, the rate rollback measure in 96. I, I think it's, it's clear that the preferred recommendation from city staff comes from, you know, what city, city staff would like to have is the unfettered means to be able to do whatever they think is important to do whenever they think it's important to do it. And this comes back to whether we have, you know, civilian or military control of our governments. And I believe that we have civilian control of our governments for a reason. That's because we elect you folks, and if you do something silly, we can unelect you or we can recall you. So I think what we did back in 1996 was say, we want you to be responsible year after year and raise the rates by about 3% so that, you know, nobody gets excited about it, but you have the money to do it. It's politically very easy to go, oh, well, I don't want to do that, I don't want to raise rates this year. And then next year, well, I don't want to raise rates this year. And then pretty soon, you've gotten yourself back into that same spot where you have to raise rates 18% to catch up to what you haven't had the political will to do in the first place. So the point about having, and I, I disagree with Frank just a little bit, I think you could do the 8% for the eight years. And then cut it in half and say, okay, then we have a max of 4%. That gives you a little bit of space between, between inflation and whatever, and it allows you to do, but you also have to have the political will to actually make those rate adjustments every year. And what I've found is that most politicians don't have the guts to make those rate increases. And if you don't, then you're going to find yourself back where Mayor Neely says every 10 years, having to go to a vote of the people and say, what is it we need to do? And I think that you all need to be more responsible than that.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. Paul Edgar.
It's your opportunity to lead, folks. I think you can do this, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad you were watching online, too. That's very good. I'm very glad.
Thank you, Paul Edgar, Oregon City. I, I'd like to kind of talk about maybe a hybrid of what some of this has been talked about. And part of that is based around the whole idea that what happens nationally and with the overall compression we're finding in the economy, when we start going out for larger amounts, and that we don't know what's, what it's going to be like, even with the financial cliff that's being looming in Washington DC. And we've got to be pretty cognizant of the fact that I, I really think that when you start venturing over 3%, you're really starting to get into the elasticity where something that you're, you're proposing really starts reaching some area on the mass that is going to have a potential of a failure at the ballot box. And this is dangerous, and I would prefer to not have anything dangerous like that. I happen to be a proponent of pay now or pay later. I cannot find it in my heart to say that we should, we should not have, we should, I think we should eliminate this rollback. Personal opinion, okay? But I get nervous over 3% nights, so then the hybrid part of it is, I think we should take and separate the public works building funds and the, this money that's being taken away from water rates to go into building that fund. I think those money should all be restored back for, for water pipe maintenance. Bring it all back in. And then in the hybrid side is, is the public works building is an asset, that asset can be bonded, and it can be a completely separate thing. So if we bring back money that we've already put into an encumbered fund, put it back into maintenance where it should be, and quit taking money from this, and literally, yes, there's a rational ability to say, so much of my operational costs have to be, go towards like rent, my fair share of the operations of, or the building. But, but in reality, what I'm saying, bond then the building as a capital side completely, separating it from water rates completely. And, and then just live within the 3% with a rollback. And that would be, I think if you don't pull that money back, you're putting yourself into jeopardy in the ballot box. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. David Fraser.
Commissioners, I'd like to address that last point that Mr. Edgar made, because my advice to you is, I really don't know, I don't have political advice about whether using general, general, or I'm sorry, general obligation bonds to build a portion, let's say 20% of the public works facility building, buildings are needed to operate your utility. What concerns me is what Mr. Edgar is essentially arguing is rate payers should not help pay for that facility. Instead, it should be borne exclusively by property taxpayers.
Right.
My concern about that is, some of our biggest water users in the city are tax exempt. The county, the school district, South Fork Water Board.
Yep.
Some of the biggest rate users in the city are, are tax exempt already, and so by doing what Mr. Edgar's suggesting, we're actually putting a greater burden on individual residential property tax rate payers as opposed to water rate users. So I, I actually don't think that's as fair to the, to the taxpayer to exempt all of those tax exempt entities that are already here.
Commissioner Ruff.
Oh, my question was, if we did what Mr. Edgar's suggesting, what would be the dollar amount? I don't know if you would know or why I would know. What would be that dollar amount that has gone to the building fund? Would be coming back into?
To, into the building fund? Last time I looked, last time I looked, it was somewhere between four and five million. And that's not all, well, that's not all from the water fund, though, so I don't know the specific amount that's come from the water fund. That was total over all the four funds, so. I would like to say a quarter of that.
You'd take a quarter of that.
Just to give you, on, on an annual, the most recent annual contribution from the water fund to the Public Works Center was $400,000. So they don't, it doesn't quite swap out with the 2.3 million that's needed for pipe, pipe replacement on an annual basis.
Right, thank you.
Okay, and Mayor Neely?
I would, if we went to the 3%, I think we're not going to be covering our pipe replacement either, no matter what decision we make on the, on the public works building. I've always, I've always had the feeling that if people save now and put money aside for their college education, it's a lot cheaper than taking a loan out when the time is to have college education. And I think that would be true of a public works facility, too. It's going to be cheaper for us to save money and build it than it is to bond it.
Yes, I'd agree. And I think the voters would like that, that we saved our money.
One other thing I wanted to talk about, and I, I would like to check in on, you know, the two, you know, which one sounds like you're leaning towards the alternate recommendation at some rate? And you're, I don't know that I have consensus around the preferred recommendation, but I heard pretty strongly from you, Rocky, but the one thing that I wanted to, or Commissioner Smith, one thing that I wanted to touch on was, do we not agree that the city does have a record of kind of holding to what it's committed to the public to do? And, you know, maybe, maybe that changes based on staff or commissions and things like that. Obviously, it does, but, you know, there is some truth to, Obviously, it does, but, you know, there is some truth to, if commissioners don't do what they're, you know, what's right for the people, then they get... That's true probably for staff as well. So, I mean, at least, I guess I'd just like to say that I think we have a track record of kind of doing what we say we're going to do, and if that's... I think that would apply to water rates as well. And I especially like the idea of, you know, if there is some kind of an advisory body that could help us through that, it's not a lot different than some of the other commissions that we have and advisory bodies that we have. So...
My comment was more, how do we assure the voters that that's going to happen?
Right.
More so than us actually, you know, keeping our word. It's really... I mean, we have to make sure that the voters feel that that's what we're going to do. All right. Any... Yes?
Well, I think, in speaking in the same vein that John's speaking, I think if we had an advisory board or commission or something, that would speak more to the voters, too. It would not just be staff making the decision. It would be a group with their peers that were keeping up on this.
All right. Any other?
Well, I don't think we were ever contemplating it being staff making the decision. We were contemplating it being the commission making the decision.
Yeah, we're going to make the final.
But, you know, I guess one way to think about this, if I could recommend this to you, because you don't have to make that decision tonight, but I think what we're looking for is if there's a consensus that's sort of gelling around one or two of these options, to think about if you were selling cars, what kind of car would you like to sell? Because after this thing goes to the ballot, the staff...
We have to sell it.
You are the sales...
We need a...
I would actually... I would allow the city to...
Okay.
Don't make me use this, I will.
I won't say bonds or corporate shares. I'll just say candy bars. What kind of candy bar do you think would be most... In other words, since you have to sell it, let us know what you think. I mean, you've got good feedback from your work group, you've got good feedback from citizens tonight. To try to think about which one of these... If the 8 percent is a hard sell, and the 5 percent is an easier sell, you know, you know that you have to do something. And I think the only responsible solution is probably... That 5 percent, to me, looks like a very minimum for you to really do anything meaningful with your pipe replacement. And it takes a long time to get there, but I understand that West Lynn has a 5 percent cap, so there are some precedent in the region for other cities that have a similar situation. But think about when you're talking to that committee, or the citizen, the neighborhood voter, or the coffee in your neighborhood, and talking about 5 percent with a citizens' advisory group to recommend to the commission what a rate would be. Are those two things, do those two things together seem powerful to you as far as selling it when you're trying to address the solution, the problem, in a meaningful, responsible way? And of course, when you're out there selling it, we will have documents for you. We'll have, you know, spreadsheets and handouts and information for you to use to demonstrate what the need is, because I think that's, even 5 percent, sounds like a lot if there's no need.
I want a pipe.
And we will be happy to get those pipes, and an included one. That's the word that I came up with.
Yes, included pipe.
So the... I mean, we have heard good information. You know, everybody in this audience, I think, is a strong supporter. And it seems to me like, based on the amount of... The lack of knowledge based on the community, if we don't have this group's support...
Right.
Then we're not going to sell it, because it's pretty easy to provide really great information, do great surveys, but if we have one or two that are adamant about, you know, what we're moving forward is wrong, they're going to have a huge impact. So, I mean, I respect everything that's been said. I think, you know, yes, we'd like to see 8 percent because we think that's responsible, but what we'd really like to know tonight is whether you think it's 8 percent, or 7 percent, or 6... Where can we move forward?
I think this is a study session. I think that's a discussion that we need to expand on a bit, based on the discussion we have. I'd rather try to give you the direction in a month or two than right at this point.
All right.
I mean, if you want me to say so, right now, I would say go for the 5 percent. I mean, it looks like you deal with almost in 20 years. And we don't have any forecast of what's going to go on in the long term and barely in the short term anyway. So some other commission may... Somebody has to make another decision, but I'm going to stay the common of me, but I think 5 percent is about as high as I would want to go to.
Okay. Any other comments, or are we working on...
Well, did you want actually direction on your recommendations? Is that what you were looking for?
That would help. That would help. That would get us 50 percent the way there.
So I would...
Let's go back to...
We have 20 percent of the direction already, and we really appreciate that.
Well, I would have to go with what the mayor had said. 5 percent is where I would be leaning. I know 8 percent would get us there quicker, but like the pavement maintenance fee, it takes a while to build it up, but now, look, you go... You got Division Street done, that was great. People going to the hospital appreciate it.
Yeah. With the 8 percent, I just, I have a problem with looking at the rates and seeing it double.
Yeah.
You know, that I... And I think that with the 5 percent and knowing that, you know, it's a cap, that it will gain the voters', you know, trust, and knowing that there's a cap to that, and we are, you know, drawing over a period of time, so the impact isn't all the sudden.
That's my feeling, too.
I personally... Yeah, I agree, too, but I wouldn't mind seeing what happens with 6 percent or some of the...
Would the commission like us to focus mostly on the 5 and then run another scenario at a 6?
You know what I'd really like is a hard copy of those things so I could sit here and look.
What I'd really like is if people were to request to speak on here, so I...
Stop around the presentation, we're talking about this, so you can't...
Well, I'm... Well, yes, you can. Or you could at least raise your hand, like in school way back when.
Well noted. Thank you.
Way back when.
Thank you.
A long, long time ago.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. We can get you the hard copies of this presentation.
Yeah. Do you have this on the website?
There will be.
Okay.
Is that good enough, Kathy, or do you want a paper copy?
Kathy Roth. If you're going to do the 6 and 7 and whatever, could we get a hard copy of all this?
Bet him out.
I want to make sure that it stays in our charter, though. Okay? So that's the alternative. I don't know how you guys...
Put stays in the charter.
That we're going to amend the charter to... That it won't go just to the city commission, because I think that'll get us back into what we got into beginning with. To take it out of the charter completely is the one, the first recommendation, correct?
So, you know, we're assuming what the consensus seems to be right now is alternate recommendation up there with somewhere in the 5 to 6 percent to be studied further. That's what we're hearing.
I have a problem with that.
Okay.
My problem is, I don't like putting numbers in a charter.
Right.
Because we don't know, next year, the whole world could collapse and...
That's why our first recommendation is...
Yeah.
To take it out of the charter.
It's the same thing that happened with the '94 thing. They put a number in there.
Well, yeah. And what happened is they put a year in there, too, so... Which is a number.
But that's a number.
But you don't know, just like you had said to Nancy Bush, "It's nice that you're considerate to the people and you don't give them tickets, but you're not always going to be in that position." And that's my point. We're not always going to be here, so you don't know that you're going to have a responsible commission who's going to be responsible and not raise the rate 75 percent.
Right. But you can take care of that by having an advisory board in place.
And the advisory boards were not activated until Mayor Neely got them going.
No, no, no. I mean, the advisory board I'm talking about for public works that would handle water rates and things, that would be in place. That would take care of your commission not being responsible.
I disagree, but...
But if you had a cap in the charter, you could... If you had an emergency situation, you could still go out for a bond for something else. So you could still get your needs met if you had an emergency situation, but it would give the voters that assurance that there is a check and balance if there's a cap. Advisory committee, I think, is an excellent idea, though, too, Kathy.
Yeah, I just don't like to see numbers stuck in charters.
I was trying to be nice. An advisory board's an advisory board. Even boards that we give authority to, like the Historic Review Board and the Planning Commission, they're all appeal to the city commission.
Right.
City commission is the ultimate decider, and I don't think the group of elected officials should ever give up their power to unelected advisory.
Right.
I support the advisory committee council, but misunderstanding. I think it's good to have some knowledgeable citizens there working with our public works on water issues, but the point is, it's always going to come back to the commission, or can.
All right. Any other discussion on this topic? All right. Hearing none. 3B Willamette River Water Trail Memorandum of Understanding, and I believe our community service director, Scott Archer.
Thank you. I think, Commissioner, you'll find this to be a much less challenging discussion to have. I think a lot less...
I'm glad you left this on our tabletop.
And I think you'll find this to be a much shorter discussion as well. This is pretty straightforward. I did put some additional handouts at your place that were not included in the original packet, and for anybody that's in attendance that wishes to have those, they're back on the counter. Commissioner, this is just a really straightforward memorandum of understanding that I'm requesting your support that staff would be allowed to sign, that we would enter this partnership agreement with the 17 other agencies that have already entered into this agreement. It is for what is called the Willamette Water Trail Partnership. Really, kind of briefly, and there's information that is available to read much more about this if you wish, but just real briefly, the purpose of this partnership is that it formalizes kind of what's been a talking, working group for the last few years about the Willamette Water Trail. Very... Kind of a quick definition is, a water trail is a stretch of river, or a lake, or some type of waterway that has been mapped and contains specific facilities that enable access camping, restrooms, access to the land to, you know, use amenities and so forth, and also informational resources for non-motorized boaters, canoes, kayaks, rafts, and the like. And so this water river trail has already been delineated on the Willamette, and there's a partnership that is being worked on that allows the different agencies the opportunity to cooperate and work together to map the sites. Basically, it's to the advantage of the public that would be using that resource, our great resource, that is the Willamette River, and to be able to access the local amenities and to work together. And again, emphasis is that this is... The water trails are for non-motorized uses, but that these uses don't conflict with the use of motorized boats, so that the one doesn't interfere or preclude with the other. The memorandum of understanding was included in your packet, and you may not have read all of that. There's some additional information. The Oregon Parks and Recreation Department is heading this effort up, and so on their website is a lot of good information. There's a lot of information for the public. There are maps and lists of amenities and so forth. And obviously, with our Willamette River frontage, we've got the John Storm Park, we've got Clackamas Park, we have a number of amenities that would be attractive for these types of uses, and I'm recommending that we would enter into this relationship. This is a non... Really, a non-binding agreement. It's just a simple thing. So it doesn't require your formal approval, but I want you to know about it. Make sure you don't have any questions or concerns or what have you. And essentially, I'm suggesting just that I would sign this on behalf of the city or that Mr. Fraser would. This MOU is neither a fiscal nor funds obligation of any type. And if there ever were such, those types of obligations, those would be brought back in a more formal agreement and would be approved in separate agreements. Also, any of the partners may terminate their partnership, their participation in the agreement at any time with a written notice. For whatever reason in the future, if we decided we didn't want to be in this partnership, we just simply give a written notice and we're out of it. It's that simple. So it's, you know, it's just really a simple agreement, but I think it's a good step. There are 17 other public and private agencies that have already signed onto the agreement. That was one of the items that I left at your place, is the list of agencies, so you can get an idea of up and down the Willamette River, who all have entered the agreement thus far. And the partnership group is still working on a number of other agencies. They're really urging our participation, and I'm also urging that. So I'd like to just kind of leave it at that and ask for any questions you might have, or just sort of a general, you know, head nod of consensus. I know you can't take any formal actions at this meeting, but that really isn't required for this MOU, so...
All right. Commissioner Mumm?
I'm glad you left the partners, because I did have a question about that. I saw that there's two meetings a year that you would have to attend, either in person or by phone. So kind of who's the organizer of this?
Oregon Parks and Rec Department.
So they have a specific staff person that's assigned to this?
Right. They do. They have a staff person that kind of coordinates this effort.
Okay.
At some point, that could change. It's written in such a way... The MOU is written in such a way that one of the other agencies could take the lead on coordinating the effort, but it's a consortium partnership.
Okay. All right. That's my question.
All right. Any other concerns or questions?
I think it's great, personally.
Yeah, it's very good.
You know?
Great. Thank you.
All right. And that leaves us with...
I told you, that would be pretty easy.
Thank you.
3C, review of the 2013 meeting schedule.
Yeah.
Okay. So every year about this time, you get a calendar in your packet, and the purpose is just to review it, make sure that there's no glaring conflicts, and if everything looks good, then we can go ahead and schedule the meeting rooms for the proper times and get the notice to the public and get the list on the website. Just to note that the upcoming January meetings, of course, the first meeting in January is January 2nd, the work session is January 8th, and then the retreat is scheduled for the 11th and 12th. So it's kind of a busy first part of the year.
It is.
So I just wanted to point that out. It also includes your... The dates of the budget committee meetings, the urban renewal budget meeting, metro enhancement, and OCC IT grant review.
Okay.
So they're all on there, everything that you're a part of. It does not include other standing committees, but those that you're attending. So any issues? If not, then we will go ahead and publish and...
I would...
Okay. Any issues at this point?
Yes.
Right. Yeah, okay.
Except for January 2nd?
I know.
If the commission thinks that because the retreat is right there at that same time, and some in the community may be recovering from New Year's festivities, but if you do think that's too much and too short of a time, I mean, let us know and we can...
No, it's good. Just do it and get it over with.
Okay.
I love those meetings. I love those meetings all. April's really busy.
Senate Managers' Report.
You'll recall at the last council meeting, I had a lengthy, a very lengthy report, lots of things to report, so tonight I have nothing.
Wow. Very cool.
Well, the mayor could have stayed and ran this meeting.
Oh.
I just wanted to point out with this, wow.
I know.
I was thinking about, you know, when you see photographs that are so beautiful, they look fake? I got... We get school pictures at school, even the teachers do, and mine was so beautiful, but then we realized that all the teachers were airbrushed, all of our... They looked so good. We all looked really good.
I love it.
But this is not airbrushed. This is what a bridge actually looks like.
This is really art.
It's beautiful.
Yeah, that's great.
But I wanted to say, I don't know if anyone's said the questions about the lights on the bridge. People have been asking... I know that's a question that I wanted to know, and thankfully, we got the answer. So the lights have been removed from the bridge because of some issues with water. I guess it's raining and they're leaking or something, so the lights will be put back on the bridge. They were... Every night that I was coming home after the event that I was doing in October, the lights were off. Every night I came by and I was like, "What is going on?" So I guess they're being fixed. They've been removed and they'll be fixed, so... But the picture has them on there and it looks good. I guess that's it, so we will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.